यह तो सबके पास दूसरा लैपटॉप है यह देखिए मुझे इससे बढ़ रहा है ना इससे बढ़ रहा है तो इसी से इसमें साउंड आना चाहिए तभी
वो बस मैं लैपटॉप दूसरा है समस्या साउंड ही नहीं रहा है या इसमें स्पीकर में रहा है वो भी नहीं
भाषा से बोले थे तो ए रहा था बोले थे तो ए रहा
ओके हम कर अभी मीटिंग शुरू कर देते हैं उसके बाद प्लीज टेक योर सीट्स वी आर गोइंग तू स्टार्ट प्लीज टेक योर सीट रचना जी प्लीज टेक योर सीट प्लीज कम फॉरवर्ड प्लीज टेक योर सीट गुड मॉर्निंग फ्रेंड्स ऑन बिहाफ ऑफ ग्लोबल रिसर्च एंड एजुकेशनल फाउंडेशन आई वेलकम यू ऑल वो आर प्रेजेंट इन दिस ऑडिटोरियम एंड दोज़ वो आर कनेक्टेड ऑनलाइन एंड वी आर सॉरी बिकॉज़ ऑफ सम ऑडियो टेक्निकल प्रॉब्लम वी हैव बिकम लेट इन स्टार्टिंग डी प्रोग्राम टिप रूम और दें हाफ एन आवर लेट बट देयर आर सर्टेन प्रॉब्लम्स व्हेन वी डील विथ टेक्नोलॉजी सो वी हैव तू डीएल विथ दिस काइंड ऑफ प्रॉब्लम्स सो नौ विदाउट टेकिंग मच टाइम आई थिंक वी शुड स्टार्ट आवर इनोग्रल फंक्शन आज यू आर अवेयर डेट टाइटल ऑफ दिस प्रेजेंट कॉन्फ्रेंस इस डी ग्लोबल आइशन एंड डी क्राइसिस ऑफ डी प्रोजेक्ट ऑफ मोडर्निटी थ्योरेटिकल एंड मैथेलॉरिजिकल नॉनसिस सो फर्स्ट ऑफ ऑल आई इनवाइट डॉक्टर प्रोफेसर माधव गोविंद तू कम ऑन डी डायस प्लीज टेक योर सीट आई इनवाइट प्रोफेसर परवेज अब्बासी कम ओवर हियर आई इनवाइट प्रोफेसर मालकपूर शंकरदास तू कम ओवर एंड तू प्रेजेंट ओवर डी इनोग्रल सेशन एट डी वेरी आउटसाइड आई रिक्वेस्ट प्रोफेसर परवेज अब्बासी तू वेलकम डी गैस दोज़ वो आर प्रेजेंट हियर एंड दोज़ वो आर वर्चुअली कनेक्टेड प्रोफेसर अब्बासी वहां जाने के लिए आप इधर आ रही
गुड गुड मॉर्निंग गुड मॉर्निंग फ्रेंड्स ऑन बिहाफ ऑफ ग्रेपी
आर यू प्लीज कंटिन्यू
गुड मॉर्निंग फ्रेंड्स ऑन बिहाफ ऑफ ग्रेपी फर्स्ट आई वुड लाइव तू वेलकम आवर चीफ गेस्ट जनरल लेफ्टिनेंट साइन मेजर जनरल एके सिवा सर वो इस तू ऑर्गेनाइज डी कॉन्फ्रेंस जनरल मेजर जनरल सिवा आई एम थैंक्युअल तू मेजर जनरल सिवा वो काइंडली कंसेंटेड
ये जॉइन ओके प्रोफेसर अब्बासी प्लीज करके देंगे
ऑन बिहाफ ऑफ ग्रेपी आई वुड लाइव तू वेलकम मेजर जनरल एके सिवा वो विद विद इन अन शॉर्ट नोट इस काइंडली कंसेंटेड तू इनोग्रे डी कॉन्फ्रेंस आज वेल एस वी कंसेंटेड तू रिलीज अन बुक सर इट्स अन मेमोरेबल मोमेंट पर आस तू वेलकम यू इन दिस इंटरनेशनल कॉन्फ्रेंस आई वुड लाइव तू थैंक्स आर पार्टिसिपेंट्स वो प्रेजेंट हियर एंड वो दोज़ पार्टिसिपेंट्स वो आर वर्चुअली कनेक्टेड इन दिस सेमीनार आई एम आल्सो थैंक्युअल तू प्रोफेसर माधव गोविंद
वेलकम तू वेल
आई एम आई वेलकम तू प्रोफेसर माधव गोविंद सिंह वो इस अन पार्ट ऑफ दिस कॉन्फ्रेंस आज वेल एस आई वुड लाइव तू वेलकम प्रोफेसर मालकपूर शंकरदास वो इस आल्सो वन ऑफ डी पैनलिस्ट एंड वो इस जस्ट चेयरिंग डी सेशन आई वुड लाइव तू थैंक्स ऑल दोज़ वो आर वर्किंग बिहाइंड बिहाइंड डी कार्टन तू मेक दिस कॉन्फ्रेंस सक्सेस थैंक यू वेरी मच
रुक जाइए रुक जाइए वो लैंप जलवा दे
सो वेरी गुड मॉर्निंग फ्रेंड्स एंड वेलकम तू दिस कॉन्फ्रेंस बिफोर वी स्टार्ट दिस कॉन्फ्रेंस आई वुड रिक्वेस्ट डिग्रेंस एंड राइट तू दिस कम एंड लाइक डी डैम
फोटो पर ले लो
गोविंद तो आफ्टर लाइटिंग डी लैंड डेट इस अन सिंपल ऑफ नॉलेज आई एम स्मोकिंग टू डाइस टू अन डायन मिस अब दिस कॉन्फ्रेंस आई विनो, इस अन पार्ट ऑफ एक्टिविटीज आफ ग्लोबल रिसर्च एंड एजुकेशन फाउंडेशन ऑफ इंडिया इन कोलोबिशन पित इंटरनेशनल सोशल रिटेल वर्किंग ग्रुप वन सोशियोलॉजी एंड लोकल ग्रोवर डिलेशन आई विल सी आई विल सी बोटिंग सोशियोलॉजी एंड कम्युनिकेशन मार्किट एंड कांटेक्ट एंड जेनरल विश्वलिक साइंस फॉर सिटी एन एंड इनियर सोशल रिटेल साइटी आर बोटिंग ग्रोवर डिलेशन एंड आईएसएसआरसी एन इनिविलिटी इस अन डिफरेंट एंड स्क्यूजर सो दिस इस अन बिग नेटवर्क ऑफ अकादमिशन एंड अकादमिक इंस्टीट्यूशन एंड रिसर्च ग्रुप डेट हैव कम तुवेरा तू डिलीवरी ऑन वेरी इंपॉर्टेंट इट्स यू कॉन्फ्रेंस एंड यू आर जू वर्क ऑन डी सो दिस ग्रोवर डिलेशन डी क्राइसिस ऑफ ग्रोवर डिलेशन डेट वी आर फेसिंग पार्टिकुलर डी क्राइसिस ऑफ डी प्रोजेक्ट ऑफ मोडर्निटी डेट हैव स्टार्टेड डेट वी हैव इंस्टीट्यूटेड इन आर्नाइटिंग सेवर कॉन्फ्रेंस आई विल टेक दिस इस अन गिफ्ट कॉन्फ्रेंस वी आर अपडेटिंग एंड दिस काइंड ऑफ कॉन्फ्रेंसेस आर नॉट ओनली जस्ट फॉर टॉकिंग पॉइंट इस साइड आर कमिंग एंड रिलेटिंग पेपर विल फायर बट सम अकादमिक रूप बोर्नेस इस कमिंग अपन फॉर ऑफ इस एंड आल्सो इंकलेबिंग एंड मोटिवेटिंग इस कॉलर्स तू वर्स्ट विद डी व्यू लाइन दिस साइड एंड कम अप इन योर इंटरेक्ट रियलिटी ऑफ डी डी इमाइंड विल सोशल आर्डर कमिंग यू तू डी ग्रोवर डिलेशन डी ब्रॉन थिंग ऑफ दिस ग्रोवर डिलेशन क्राइसिस ऑफ मोडर्निटी विल बी डिस्टर्बिंग ऑल इस बिगर तुरंत बट आई वुड जस्ट लाइक तू सिन डेट हाउ दिस कॉन्फ्रेंस वर्क अन सर्टिफिकेट अंडर तू थिंग्स डेट व्हाट आर डी थ्योरेटिकल फाउंडेशन एंड व्हाट आर डी मैथेलॉरिजिकल इश्यूज व्हेन वी इंस्टीट्यूट डी प्रॉब्लम ऑफ ग्रोवर डिलेशन व्हेन वी सी डी मोडर्निटी व्हाट डी मोडर्निटी इस देयर इस ग्रोवर डिलेशन इस अन नेटवर्क ऑफ मोडर्निटी मोडर्निटी इस अन ओवर वर्क इस सम्पूर्ण डी ओमो जनरेशन ऑफ डी कल्चर ओमो जनरेशन ऑफ इकोनॉमी ओमो जनरेशन ऑफ स्टेट सो दिस व्हेन दिस काइंड ऑफ इंटरनेशनल वर्क इन इंप्लेस दें दें वाच आल्सो प्रॉब्लम ऑफ क्राइसिस क्राइसिस इमरजेंट बिकॉज़ डी इडिटिव पॉइंट इडिटिव डी लोकल कल्चर कल्चर पीपल दे स्टार्टेड असर्टिंग डी इडिटिव सो अंडर वन हेड देयर इस अन नीड फॉर प्रोटेक्टिंग योर इडिटिव योर कल्चर योर लैंग्वेज योर इकोनॉमी अंडर हेड देयर इस अन रोलर पोस्टिंग ऑफ डी प्रोजेक्ट ऑफ मोडर्निटी सर दिस कॉम्पिकेटेड थिंग्स वेल विल कवर अंडर डी ग्रोवर डिलेशन मेनी न्यू आईडियाज आर आल्सो कमिंग अप पीपल आर सेंडिंग येयर ग्रोवर डिलेशन इस इफॉर्मेशन बट ग्रोवर डिलेशन इस आल्सो टेकिंग यार ऑफ डी ग्रोवर डिलेशन सांस्कूल जॉस्ट टेकिंग ग्रोवर डिलेशन मींस लोकल थिंग्स आर आल्सो टेकिंग डी ग्रोवर सो देयर इस अन दिस लोकल एंड ग्रोवर वर्जन डेट थिंग सो अन्यथा इस कम डी फॉर डी ग्रोवर डिलेशन मींस डी डोल आर डी ग्रोवर थियार्टी लोकल एंड डोल आर लोकल थियार्टी हिस डी ग्रोवर सो दिस थिंग्स आर आल्सो सो नॉट थैंक यू मच टाइम व्हेन वी आर ऑलरेडी डिलीट सो बार तुरंत वी नो स्पीकर वी हैव वेरी डिस्टिंग्विन स्कॉलर्स एंड वेरी स्टेबलिस्ट प्रोफेसरल इन दिस फील्ड प्रोफेसर बीबी सिंह दी आई वुड लाइव तू गिव यू अन ब्रिटिश इंट्रोडक्शन अबाउट प्रोफेसर बीबी सिंह वो इस अन क्रीम ऑफ स्पीकर फॉर तुरंत प्रोग्राम्स आप सर रेल पासिंग आफ्टर कंप्लीटिंग इस मिल बी कम
प्रोफेसर गोविंद पहले सर का करा
सर ओके ड्यू तू पॉसिबिलिटी आफ डी टाइम एंड वंस एंड सम आदर इंगेजमेंट अपऑर्ट चीफ गेस्ट फॉर तुरंत आई वुड लाइव तू आई वुड सर इट इस अन पार्टिनेंट तू आर्स आवर चीफ गेस्ट तू इनोग्रे दिस थिंग बट लेट्स मी फर्स्ट इंट्रोड्यूस आवर तू गेस्ट तुरंत इस मेजर जनरल अथॉरिनिटी सिवा विसिस तेवा मुद्दर एंड बार विच आर ऑर्मी ऑफिसर इन सितंबर 2014 आफ्टर सर्विंग फॉर मोर दें 37 इयर्स इस एल्यूमिनाइया बिग बोर्ड पेपर वाटिंग एंड लॉन्ग डिफिशिएंट मैनेजमेंट फोर्स सेकंदराबाद ही हैव आल्सो अटेंडेड एडवांस सिक्योरिटी फोर एंड टेरोरिज्म एट एशिया पैर्टिकल सिक्योरिटी परिस्थिति एट हावाइन इन यूएसए जनरल हैव डी लॉन्ग एक्सपीरियंस ऑफ सर्विंग इन काउंटर टेरोरिज्म एंड काउंटर इंसर्जेंसी एनवायरमेंट ओवर इन जमाकंटी एंड नॉर्थ सी ही कमांडेट डी ऑफ नेशनल ब्रिगेड ऑन लाइन ऑफ कंट्रोल इन काथनीर वायरिंग एंड वन अवार्डेड व्हाय एसएम फॉर इनिशिमेटिंग डिटर्ट नंबर ऑफ टेरोडिस फॉर ही प्रोफेशनलिटी इन हैंडलिंग वॉर टाइप सिचुएशन ही वर्क चीफ ऑफ इस्टाफ अफका सिंह नदर डिप्लॉय अगेंस्ट चीन एंड पाकिस्तान ही हैड डी रोडिया ऑर्मी फॉर तू इयर्स तू एंड ऑफिसर एंड वन सक्सेसफुल इन टेकिंग डी आर्नाइटिंग तू अन न्यू फाइट आफ्टर रिटायरमेंट की पार्टिसिपेटिंग इन बाय डी स्केल्स एंड फैक्टरीज एनर्जी तू नंबर ऑफ नेशनल एंड डी बी चैनल ही आल्सो मेंबर ऑफ ग्रोवर काउंटर इन डिलीवरिया डॉक्टर सर वी आर वेरी प्राउड ऑफ डी एक्टिवमेंट वर्क डेटें ऑफ ऑफरेंटली एंड डेटें ऑफ ऑफिसर एंड आई हैव वाच बेबर ऑफ डी ऑफ डिबेट एंड डिस्क्रिप्शन एंड डेस्कटॉल चैनल एंड आई फाइंड यू वेरी मेंटल ब्लेसिंग फॉर डी अक्टिवेटिंग डेट वी गेंद पॉइंट्स ऑफ यू एंड टूटिंग अन ग्रोस थैंक यू वेरी मच एंड वेलकम तू दिस कॉन्फ्रेंस एंड दिस इस अन डी आर रेड रिफरेंट डेट वो आर विथ अस एंड वो विल ब्लेस अस विथ योर फेस थिंकिंग सो डॉक्टर मेटें टर्नल सिवा
गुड मॉर्निंग लेडीज एंड जेंटरमेंट आई होप आई एम ओडिबा
यस सर
थैंक यू वेरी मच फॉर इनवाइटिंग मी ऑन दिस अगस्त गैदरिंग आई हैव सम आदर कमिटमेंट आल्सो आई डोंट हैव टू मच टाइम तू स्टे विथ यू बट इन डी इन एनी वे फर्स्ट ऑफ ऑल लेट मी कॉम्प्लीमेंट फॉर ऑर्गेनाइजिंग सच अन एक्सीलेंट इवेंट एंड सेमीना नो आज फर एस यू नो व्हाट वास माय फोकस वास तू जस्ट ब्रिंग आउट आज तू व्हाट इस हैप्पेलिंग इन रशिया यूक्रेन वॉर एंड आल्सो हो डेट इट इंपैक्ट इंडिया एंड डी एरिया रॉ नो ऑल ऑफ अस नो डेट रशियन यूक्रेन वॉर सरप्राइज डी होल वर्ल्ड व्हेन इट स्टार्टेड एंड व्हेन इट स्टार्टेड एवरीवन थॉट डी रशिया विल एबल तू ओवररन यूक्रेन इन अनदर 10-15 डेज बट इट डिड नॉट हैपन एंड व्हाय रशिया अटैक्ड ऑन यूक्रेन वास बेसिकली रशिया वास क्लेमिंग डेट डी नेटो इस कमिंग तू इट्स डोर्स्टेप एंड डेट इस नॉट अक्सेप्टेबल तू रशिया एंड डेट व्हाय दे अटैक्ड यूक्रेन बट डी चैलेंज विच वास शोन बाय डी यूक्रेन एंड आल्सो डी सपोर्ट गिवन बाय बाय डी नेटो कंट्रीज आज वेल अन यूएस हैव मेड लॉट ऑफ डिफरेंट एंड आल्सो डी इंस्पाइरेशनल लीडरशिप ऑफ जेलेंसकी सो आज ऑन तुरंत डी वॉर हैव बिन मोर दें वन ईयर एंड एक्सेप्ट अबाउट 15% एरिया विच हैव बिन टेकन बाय रशिया नो डाउट यूक्रेन हैव बिन कंप्लीटली डैमेज देयर इस अन लॉस ऑफ 70% इन्फास्ट्रक्टर गॉन बट बट डी रशिया इस आल्सो ब्लीडिंग रशिया इकोनॉमी इस गॉन यू नो टेल डाउन इन डी सेंस डेट डी रशियन इकोनॉमी तुरंत इस ब्लीडिंग एंड सो इस डी मिल्ट्री पार बिकॉज़ ऑल बाय योरसेल्फ यू कांट फाइट अन वॉर फॉर फॉर अबाउट वन ईयर नोट टू मेनी कंट्रीज हैव सपोर्टेड रशिया इट इस इदर इरान विच हैव गिवन डी शाही ड्रोन एंड और नॉर्थ कोरिया चीन विच इस अदरवाइज अन फ्रेंड तू रशिया हैव नॉट ओपनली कम एंड सपोर्टेड रशिया डी रीजन इस सिंपल चीन आर अन वेरी क्लेवर कंट्री दे हैव अन ट्रेड विथ डी यूरोपियन यूनियन एंड यूएस मोर दें 3 ट्रिलियन डॉलर दे डोंट वांट इट तू जेपरडाइज दिस दे आल्सो हैव नंबर ऑफ कंपनीज वर्किंग इन यूरोप एंड यूएस एंड हैंड सो फार इट हैव नॉट ओपनली कम एंड सपोर्टेड रशिया बट नन्दीलास आज ऑन तुरंत इट लुक्स लाइक डेट रशिया इस प्लानिंग फॉर अन वेरी मेजर ऑफेंसिव सम्वेल इन डी समर कमिंग में ओब्लिक एंड ऑफ अप्रैल एंड डेट इस डी टाइम व्हेन इट नीड डी हेल्प ऑफ चीन एंड सीजी पिंग डी प्रेसिडेंट ऑफ चीन हैव गॉन एंड मेट डी पुटिंग नो ही हैव टेकन विथ हिम 12 पी पॉइंट पीस प्लान आल्सो विथ पॉसिबली नॉट मच हैव कम बट इट लुक्स लाइक डेट ही हैव प्रॉमिस डायरेक्टली और इंडायरेक्टली विल हेल्प चीन विल हेल्प रशिया इन फाइटिंग दिस मेजर ऑफेंसिव विच इस तू कम इन एंड ऑफ अप्रैल स्टॉक इन बिगिनियर ऑफ में नो आज फर डी 12 पीस पॉइंट पीस प्लान इस कंसर्न देयर वास लॉट ऑफ हाइप ऑल राउंड डी वर्ल्ड वेदर डेट सॉर्ट ऑफ प्लान कैन सक्सी डी रीजन वास सिंपल चीन हैव ब्रोकर्ड पीस बिटवीन साउथ सी एंड इरान साउथ सी आर सुनी कंट्री एंड वेयर एस इरान इस अन सिया कंट्री दे आर आर्क रिवल्स दे आर एनीमीज देयर इस नो डिप्लोमेटिक टाइल विथ डेट फॉर लास्ट अबाउट 12 ईयर्स बट चीन कुड ब्रोकर्ड डी पीस एंड ब्रोड डम टुगेदर सो देयर वास होप डेट चीन में बिकम अन पीसमेकर इवन इन रशिया यूक्रेन वॉर बट डी क्वेश्चन इन दिस वॉर इस रशिया न्यूट्रल पार्टी डेट इस वेयर डी क्वेश्चन मार कम बिकॉज़ रशिया इस नॉट न्यूट्रल रशिया चीन इस नॉट न्यूट्रल चीन इस टिल्टेड टुवर रशिया चीन इस सपोर्टिंग रशिया एंड देयरफोर दिस पीस प्लान हैव नॉट टेकन ऑन बिकॉज़ अमेरिका यूरोप डोंट वांट तू एंड दिस वॉर बिकॉज़ आफ्टर ऑल इट इस आल्सो हेल्पिंग अमेरिका इस मिल्ट्री इंडस्ट्रियल कंप्लेक्स इस ग्रोइंग अप बट सर्टेनली दिस वॉर हैव मेड अन ट्रेमेंडस इंपैक्ट इन डी वर्ल्ड डी सप्लाई चेन हैव बिन कंप्लीटली डिस्ट्रॉयड आते सेम टाइम फूड फ्यूल फर्टिलाइजर हैव बिकम वेरी कॉस्टली इट हैव गो Food, fuel, fertilizer has become very costly, it has got adverse impact on the developing countries. As well as African and Asian countries. So therefore, there is no doubt, the world wants this war to finish at the earliest. Because there is a fear, if this war continues for longer, it can. Culminate into Third World War or there can be a nuclear holocaust. And that is the biggest fear which is there in the mind of majority of the country. India is playing a very important role. We have been uh shown that we are a strategic neutral country and we have shown that our own strategic autonomy. India is the only country wherein Prime Minister Modi on the sideline of S E O code. Uh, talk to Putin and look into his eyes and said, this is not an era of war. The war must finish off and the dialogue and diplomacy can take on. So the point today is that India is one of the country which can really bring a peace. But the time will only tell uh whether it will happen or not happen. Now, as far as the other issues are concerned, I will only like to touch upon what is happening between India and China. We know that online of actual control, the situation is not normal. As what our Minister of External Affairs has said, uh, the uh situation is abnormal one. Second thing is that the peace is still not there. And India has brought out one point very clearly, China, the business cannot be as usual. The trade cannot be there between both the countries. Bilateral relation can't be uh there as usual until there is a peace and tranquility online of actual control. And that will only happen that in case the Chinese go back and maintain the status quo April twenty twenty. So as far as China is concerned, India is very well prepared. We are now developed our infrastructure, we started late, but now we are fast catching up. And we have modernized our defense forces and we have shifted our focus from Pakistan side toward the. From the western border toward the northern border. As far as the Pakistan is concerned, it is more of irritant. Pakistan today is in economic and financial crisis. Pakistan is on a words of breaking into four and IMF is not ready to give them loan. Their foreign debt is more than hundred eighty billion dollar. The rupee Pakistan has fallen down almost about three hundred rupees per equivalent to one dollar. The foreign exchange reserve is less than two billion dollar cannot look after even ten days of their import. Uh, the inflation is more than thirty five percent. Their exports of textile has now become negligible. The imports are increasing, including luxury car and no fresh investment is coming. So the Pakistan is in today in a dire, uh, you know, financial crisis. Yet it is supporting the terrorism, that is the threat which will keep on looming large. It has about ten thousand Laskeye Toba, just say moment, is sitting in P O J K. More than that, they have started this K two pl- plan. This Amritpal Singh is not a new face, it was been brought by I S I from Gulf. And um basically, uh, he has been paratropped in Punjab. So Pakistan K two plan is Khalistan Kashmir. Now, they know the Kashmir issue by and large gone from their hand, the terrorism is almost on the last word. So they have started now the Khalistan movement. So as a nation, we have to be very careful, lot of money is coming, hawala money, drugs are coming through drones, weapons are coming. And Amritpal Singh uh is still at large, I will comment that as far as. Uh Punjab Police was concerned, they could have been better trained, better motivated and more professional in uh in this operation. Nonetheless, uh, they are trying their best to now appear. So overall, as far as Pakistan is concerned, it is more of a irritant rather than a big threat. But they will keep on supporting terrorism. As far as China is concerned, we have to be very well prepared, we have to fight our own war. Tomorrow war takes place between China and India, it is we who will fight. Uh, American can only give you a technical support. But when it comes to Indo-Pacific, we are a strategic partner with US, with Japan, with Australia. The Quad is basically against the extremism attitude of China and Indo-Pacific. And with a guiding principle, free, open and inclusive Indo-Pacific. With three rules, freedom of navigation, rule-based international order, maintaining territorial integrity and sovereignty of all nation. Including minor island nation like Vietnam, Indonesia, Laos, Burundi. So overall, uh, as far as Quad is concerned, uh, this is against the extremism attitude of China. This is not like by China, not even by uh Russia, they call it Asian NATO. And soon way Aku Shad also come where uh nuclear sub power summoning will be given to Australia. Now, in time to come, a new world order is emerging. One will be headed by a US along with its NATO countries and Western part. Another will be headed by China, along with that will be Russia, will be Iran, will be North Korea. Uh, and third will be a multipolar, it will be headed by India with Global South. And where which will be a more, uh, you can say a strategic uh to bring peace and tranquility in the world. So this is the way the things are going on, I thought I will just share with you my thoughts. And in future, whenever I will get more time, I will like to speak to this August gathering and share my view. Thank you very much. Can, can you hear me please? I, I can't hear you.
Okay.
Yeah.
You had to come here. I think it was.
I, I, I can hear you now.
It was muted automatically.
Okay.
Okay, yes, please go on.
Thank you very much, Honorable General, uh, can you hear me now?
Uh, yeah, I can hear you.
Yes, uh, thank you very much for your wonderful address and we really appreciate. The thought process which you have shared with us. And highlighted some of the concerns which are so pertinent to our conference and to the world order. You have reflected on some of the issues uh which. Uh, are turning, I would say, the world uh towards many criticality. Of globalization and modernization and you with your caliber and position. Uh, sharing things with us is a reflection of how uh we as a nation are moving ahead. In the right spirit, so I really appreciate your thoughts and for you to spare some time with us. And although this is a very, uh, as such supposed to be an academic meeting. But your thoughts have encouraged us to think very empirically about the situation. And to talk of issues which are of critical as well as practical. And the way you have reflected on uh the situation which has come up. In the recent last year or more than that between uh the global order. Um, is very uh sort of uh be uh very impressive to our conference team. And I'm sure all the participants who who are hearing you must have gained a lot. With reflecting and how to take forward some of the issues which you raised. Thank you so much for being with us and really appreciate you sparing time and being here, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah. I, you know, actually, now, please do this.
Yeah. Just uh request you please uh to spare some more time and help us release this book. Uh, which is an important event of our conference. And we have a very dynamic, uh, young, uh, uh, academician and scholar. Who has edited this book and we are very glad that we have the opportunity. And you uh to release the book today. Okay. Thanks a lot, General, uh, for releasing this book, an important contribution and publication. Well, wait for a conference and for many scholars who are attending this meeting today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much, I uh have to, my program at, at a different place, I will now bag your leave. And wish all the best to the seminar and this conference, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So for today's keynote address, we have a very renowned scholar, sociologist. Professor Brian Paul Singh. After completing his PhD from Medhat University, Dr. Singh started his career with Indian Institute of Mass Communication, New Delhi. And then joined National Institute of Rural Development, Gojati. And worked extensively in the field of rural development and communication. He joined Balakulla University, Bhopal as a senior lecturer and taught sociology passionately. And become a very popular teacher over there. Dr. Singh shifted to Central University, Assam and joined the sociology department as reader. And later became a professor and head of the sociology department. At Assam University, Professor Singh was deeply engaged in teaching, research and nurturing of new generation of sociologists. Under his supervision, several students in the field of medical and legal profession of sociology, mass communication. And globalization completed their doctoral degree and now they are placed in different parts of the country. And caring for what the intellectual legacy has for the Singh. In two thousand ten, Professor Singh joined the Department of Globalization and Development Studies, University of Elahabad. As the head of department, Professor Singh launched four-year BS integrated dual-degree program. On globalization and development studies from the session two thousand twelve and thirteen. This program was highly appreciated by the Vice Chancellor and the wider academic community. As the student got both master in development study and deeply into migration and development. In broad areas of information, social and development, implication of globalization. Role of ICT in social transformation, social impact of mobile phone, legal professions, culture and communication. Interested in conducting and supervising this research and survey on topic of academic industrial history. Professor Singh has published seminar research paper in national and international journal. His books on globalization and social stratification in India is widely referred in the reading list of several universities. His another book on network education and mobility in legal profession is a pioneering work in India. Professor Singh has been committed for professionalization of sociology in India since inception of his career. He got engaged in editing and inspiring research journal and emerging trends in development research. He was instrumental in establishing of non-distant social capital societies. Had been an active member of Indian Social Capital Society and gave new identity and visibility. Through his leadership of the Research Committee, putting on culture and communication. At international level also, Professor Singh have been widely acknowledged as active researcher. And he participated in most of the world social capital conferences in different countries. Professor Singh is a founder and director of the Global Research Educational Foundation of India. A network, a large network of academician, policy maker, historic thinkers, scholars. More working in non-governmental sectors for academic pursuits. So Professor Singh, welcome to this conference and enlighten us with your thought on the topic.
Thank you, Professor Madhav Gobin, for a very lengthy introduction of myself.
You did, sir.
I still consider myself as a student of sociology only. Because uh knowledge is like a deep well. And our mind is a small bucket. So we have very limited capacity uh to earn knowledge, to obtain knowledge. But we are always doing effort to learn more and more. And every day we learn some new things. And I think this approach to be open for new things. New situations is the crux of the concept of modernity. As I see from, after reading a lot of sociological literature. On modernity because this term has been used in many ways. Many conceptual constructs we can see in the sociological literature. So it is very difficult to talk about, very clearly about the term modernity, what is modernity, what is not modernity. And in every society, it has also a different kind of perception. Sometime westernization is considered as a modernization. If you are western in your lifestyle, you say, oh, you are modern. But there has been a long debate in India on the concept of modernity. In sixties particularly, tradition and modernity debate well-known and. Very star words of Indian sociology has deliberated on that issue. I'm not going to that, but what is my concern here today and of this particular conference. Is the project of modernity. And the project of modernity is a, we can say, it is a very. You know, basic feature of the modern industrial society of the western world. And which evolved in a very natural process in Europe. And particularly from fifteen after Renza. Uh, there was a lot of transformation in European society, which transformed not only the economy. But every institution of the European society and in a very short period of time. And there was a complete transformation of the society from a feudal society to the what today we call modern society. And this modern world modern you find everywhere in literature, modern literature, modern art. Uh, modern architect, modern political system, everything, you know, in every sphere of life. A transformation took place which was called modern. So I think it was a very wide project and a long project which started with Renza. And it has many dimensions, it is very difficult to cover here every dimension. But what is by contention today is that whether this project of modernity. Is in a crisis situation today. And the background of this is, uh, I think the problem started with. The criticism of modernity particularly by postmodern philosophers. Because first criticism came from philosophers. Uh, although the Leotard who was an architect, he introduced this term postmodern. And debate started with whether modernity is over and postmodern scholar claimed that. The new era has been begin and that is the era of postmodernism. And they say era of modernity is over. So this debate and there are some scholars like Anthony Giddens particularly and Habermas. And they very strongly claim that uh there is no end of modernity. Post and they have rejected the notion of postmodernity. And they establish or claim that the modernity is transforming itself into new form. And that uh form is what Anthony Giddens talk of the late modern. Later on, he has changed this term also when he talks about globalization particularly. And he has written a lot on globalization and conceptualizing. And but he said that globalization is a state of high modernity. And he accepted the some transformation is taking place in the society. So here there are certain issues which I would like to cover here. Uh, one important thing which I find while reading Anthony Giddens. He says that more what is modernity, it is uh post-modern society. Cannot be established without the eradication of the traditional society. Or he say modern society is post-traditional society. A claim like what postmodernists were saying about modernity. And he says the modern society is a post-traditional society. And if traditions are there, then we cannot say modern society. A complete transformation from traditional to modern, this is the position of Anthony Giddens. Later on, when he says globalization is a state of high modernity. And I think there are some problems with this notion of post-traditional society. If modern society is a post-traditional society, then what will happen to the society like India? Which are experiencing uh globalization and many or almost all these societies are. Uh, under process of globalization, the extent of globalization may be less or more. But if modern society is a post-traditional society. Then globalization by implication should also be a post-traditional society. So whether these society globalization will transform these traditional society like India. Which are very strong, uh, still traditions are very strong. And their local cultures are dominating uh in any manner. So what will happen to these structures like caste or religious ideology? And also in case of other societies of Middle East and other, particularly I am talking of. Society which profess Islam. So what will happen to that if they experience globalization, whether they will be completely transformed. Uh, into a high modern society, not modern, high modern, because globalization is a state of high modernity. So I find some problem with the this formulation of Anthony Giddens particularly. Uh, there is some problem in my opinion. Then there are other scholars like. Jigmond Bowman, who talks about solid modernity and liquid modernity. And he says, and I am quite impressed by his argument and he says that. The modernity which was experienced up to, we can say. Uh, nineteenth century or in first half of the twentieth century. He said it was solid modernity. And solid modernity means that there is no much scope. Uh, and he says that uh most of the countries were confined into their own. And where nation-state, he talks of nation-states. And forwardism, he talked about forwardism also. And he says that this forward is, was, has provided a very strong. Base to the modern industrial society and particularly a model for industrialization in the western society. But he says that now situation is changing. And he says that now we are entering into the stage of liquid modernity. And in liquid modernity, the society is quite flexible in its approach. And a lot of changes are taking place. And he also written one important to work Holocaust. If you are aware, and he said the solid modernity justified the, you know, crisis situation like Holocaust. And he criticized modernity on this ground. And he says that nowadays we require a different kind of modernity, different from the earlier one. Which were having certain limitations and he talk of liquid modernity. And liquid modernity in his opinion uh is a modernity which is quite open. And uh if we talk of industrially, he's given an example of. And if we talk of industrial, he's given an example of post- oldest society, and he says that now the capital is not confined to one place. It is moving around the world. Which was not earlier in, earlier, that is the modern society. But in today's society, he, he has not used the term globalization, but he explained liquid modernity. But I think when he was saying liquid modernity, he was addressing this problem of globalization in the western society. Then earlier there was no much transfer of technology. But today we see there is a lot of transfer of technology to the developing world. And particularly manufacturing, the hardwares. There are lot of transfer of technology. Movement of the factories from western world to the developing societies like or newly emerging economies like India and China, Brazil, South Africa. So there is a shift of factories. Or labor is local, technology is foreign. Through FDI, capital is moving from one part to another part. So in this way, there is a liquidity. It is not solid, the capital is liquid, technology is also liquid. And there is lot of migration of labor, if we see from Kerala and many other parts of India, a lot of labor migrated to the Gulf countries. In last three, four decades. And this is an important phenomenon, I think modernity, if we see in a global perspective. It is not that modernity which was conceived by the classical thinkers and who analyze in three different perspectives, the modernity. I think the debate of modernity, we can see in the work of the classical thinkers also. So from that point of view and today, we are in a very different stage. And we can see, the another author, that is, I would like to mention, that is the Manuel Castles. He talked about the network society. And and he says that today's society is a network society. And in this network society, he says the principle of operation or organization is network. And he has borrowed the concept of network, he talks about the nodes. And also he talks about certain peripheries and center and periphery units in analyzing the globalization. And he said that today, because of the information technology revolution, there is lot of transformation in society and there is the global economy work on the basis of the global economy works on the principle of network. And network which
Please put on silence, your mobile. Yes, please.
So principle of network is important in organization of the global economy. And he said, in that situation is like that, if you are connected to the network. Or then you have, you are in a advantageous position. So in network society, this information technology plays an important role. And particularly, you see that if you are, for example, we have a mobile phone. And if we switch off our mobile, so we are switched off, so we are not, we are excluded from the communication network. But if we are keeping our phone always switch on, even in the night, some people switch off there. So they are cut off from the web world. Although they have some message they can see in the morning, but for time being, they are cut off. So he said, this is the principle on which the global institutions work. And particularly the global economy. If you are useful, if you have some value for global economy, you are immediately included. But if you have lost your value, if your products are not useful today, then you are immediately excluded. And if there is a situation in which you are not, there is a no profit in some business, that business is immediately shut down by the multinational companies. Or they can close down their business in any country at any time. And they can move away with capital from that part to other part. So this kind of movement of capital, he also talked, what Bowman has also indicated. I think Bowman and Castles both have some similar kind of analysis of the globalization. Although both of them have not used the globalization in their writings. But I think when they are talking of this, they were talking of globalization. So I think that globalization is a very complicated process which is taking place today. And although there is also debate of deglobalization or globalization is in itself crisis. So this kind of debate is also there. But I think that globalization is not a very smooth process. And modernity was also not a smooth process, if you go into the extreme. There have been wars, there have been conflict, there have been colonization and this imperialism. All kind of situations modernity also faced. Developing, today's developing countries were colonies of the western world. So I think that modernity also had, had this kind of problems. And globalization is also having similar kind of upheavals. So it is not a very smooth process. And transformation, social transformation is not a very peaceful change. And there are conflicts, wars. And what happens recently in Afghanistan or in Ukraine, I think that this is a part of the process of globalization. If we see the condition of the Ukraine, they do not want to affiliate with Russia at all. They want to move away from their earlier partner, Russia, those who are together for years, for decades as USSR. So now he want to move towards European Union, they want to become member of European Union. So I think they want to become highly modern. I say globalization, if I use term of Anthony Giddens. Their movement is towards high modernity. Because we can consider Russia, Ukraine, all these societies, modern society in traditional terms. So they wish to move towards high modernity. And they want to become member of, they want trade with other European countries. That is one model of globalization, that is cooperation at regional level. They also want to become member of NATO for their security and democracy, that is important. There is a lot of, you know, problems in the world on this issue, that what kind of political system ought to be. And if you see in the modern society, there was no consensus whether modern society will, may be authoritarian society or it may be democratic society. Both kind of societies were, have transformed themselves into modern society. But this problem of authoritarianism versus democracy continues. And I think even today, when we entered in the era of globalization, after the Cold War in nineteen ninety, with the fall of USSR. I think there was an opinion that there is now only a capitalist world which exists, or there is only one word, and that is the capitalist world. And there is a downfall of the socialist model of development. But I think that this controversy is not resolved yet. And war between Russia and Ukraine is the result of this ideal, political ideological controversy. And which has created a lot of crisis situation in the entire world, I will not say only Europe. Europe is badly affected by this crisis. Rate of inflation has become very high in all countries of Europe. And even in USA also. And India has taken a very different stand, so I am not going in details of that. But my point is that the, all the societies are facing this crisis situation. And this crisis of the project of modernity, because project of modernity is not over as Giddens and Habermas and many others talk of different forms of modernity. Or they conceptualize different forms of modernity, different terms they, they use to explain this modernity which we are experiencing today. So I think the process of modernity is, has always been in a crisis situation. And this crisis is still unresolved. So there are lot of things which can be said, but I will stop here. Because I think that in this particular conference, we will focus on this kind of issues which are currently in debate at different levels. We have two scholars from the Ukrainian society who will highlight that what is their viewpoint of the current crisis situation? And how they see the relationship between Russia and Ukraine historically, particularly after nineteen ninety-one? So that we will discuss tomorrow in a special session, and that will be from four fifty to six o'clock. So I think it will be an interesting session, and we have one symposium also tomorrow on globalization and different forms of modernity. And some scholars from abroad are also joining us in that particular symposium. So I want to share my views with you, because when I organize a conference, I do not get time to share my views. I always listen other views. So this time I decided, let me also share my views with the delegates of the conference. So thank you very much for patient listening. And I think that this will generate some issues to your mind or which can be used for further research. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Professor Vipit Singh. I think you need a good applause. It has been very enriching listening to you, especially as you are the organizer of this conference and have many thoughts related to it, which you have been able to put in few words, but with deep meaning. For people to understand what they need to do, what they need to take forward, what they need to critique, what they need to understand. And I think some of the issues which you have raised are extremely dynamic. We see the world going through a lot of change. And how you have related it to the processes of globalization, modernity, the changing political order, the impacts of economic, social, geopolitical conditions on societies. And how we have to look at the concerns from a theoretical aspect. As well as, you have kind of indicated where our research should be going. So I'm sure some of the papers will talk of methodological issues in trying to capture what is relevant for our understanding of modernity. You have set the path for serious debate thinking. And I really want to thank you for giving a very good start to the conference. And like you said, that generally, you inspire all of us to do something. And we kind of assume that you have certain things in mind. But today you have expressed very well your thought process and your deep understanding of this field, which is a very complex, as well as in certain ways, a very simple thing. Because it just relates to the process of change. It just relates to the direction which societies take. But at the same time, it tries to indicate the complexity, which you have reflected very well in your keynote address. And thank you so much for highlighting various dimensions, perspectives, sharing works of some sociologists who would, I'm sure we talked of in other papers too. Thank you so much.
For formal note of thanks, Priti?
It's true, I don't want to say something. Or we should go forward of things, because it is Ah, yes, yes.
No, no, my talk is
He has to talk from the podium.
Yeah. Right. Yeah, Dr. Priti, I now request you to extend your formal note of thanks.
On the behalf of GRAPPI, I express my gratitude to the organizers of the conference to provide me this opportunity. My gratitude to Chief Guest, Major Executive General AK Sevajch. And thanking to our keynote speaker, Professor Vipit Singh. And Professor Abasi, who is Chairman of GRAPPI, for his guidance and cooperation. And thanking Professor Madhav Gobind of SSP JNU for introducing the conference and about the speakers. And also thanking to the delegates who have taken the aim to be part of this conference in person. And those who are And those who are connected virtually from different parts of the world. And my sincere thanks to the staff and director of the Institute of Social Sciences.
Share kobe. Share kabul ne.
Cooperation in organizing this session. And Professor Mahal for chairing the session. And now I invite all the delegates and guests for lunch.
Thank you, Priti, to you for my photo time.
I express my gratitude.